I would ask the clerk to please call roll.
Roll call, Bynum.
Here.
Burrows.
Here.
Townsend.
Here.
McKeonan.
Here.
Mugia.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Alvy.
Here. This evening, the invocation is being given by Reverend Brian Mann of Bethel Seventh Day Adventist Church. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Bishop, will you please?
Bishop Glenn Brady with the New Bethel Church.
I am not Pastor Mann, but certainly...
Thank you, this is Bishop Glenn Brady. Thank you, sir.
Father, we thank you today, God, for how good you've been. Thank you for the blessings of a new year, a new administration, and we certainly seek your mind. We're grateful, God, that you've allowed us even to have a safe journey here, and we pray for those that are yet still on the road, that they will have traveling mercies. Now, God, we humbly come before you and ask for grace, and that you'll smile upon us with the decisions that are made on the betterment of the residents of Kansas City, Kansas. Bless this new leadership team, and Lord, we will ever recognize you as our God and Savior. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Brady, for stepping in. Are there, Ms. Cobbins, any elected officials in the audience?
Don't see any tonight.
Oh, Mr. Chuck Stites. Want to recognize Chuck Stites at Edwardsville City Council. Thank you. Are there any revisions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a blue sheet has been distributed. We have a new item. We have an item going to be number nine, and we have a platiful Gloria Willis in this under the non-planning consent agenda.
Thank you. So tonight, we have two parts to our meeting. The planning and zoning portion will be handled first, and we will follow with a regular commission meeting. I'll ask the clerk to read the statement required by state law governing the planning and zoning portion of our meeting, followed by the items on the planning and consent agenda, planning and zoning consent agenda.
We would like to welcome all present to the meeting of the Unified Government Commission. Members of the Commission are Mayor David Alvy, Commissioner Melissa Bynum at large District 1, Commissioner Tom Burrows at large District 2, Commissioner Gail Townsend District 1, Commissioner Brian McKeonan District 2, Commissioner Ann Mugia District 3, Commissioner Harold Johnson Jr. District 4, Commissioner Mike Kane District 5, Commissioner Angela Markley District 6, Commissioner Jim Walters District 7, and Commissioner Jane Billbrick District 8. As each petition is called this evening, all persons for or against will be given the opportunity to express their views. Is this the first time that a particular petition has been before this commission? The commission has three options. Number 1, it can approve the recommendation of the Planning Commission with six votes. Number 2, it can override the Planning Commission's recommendation, but it would take eight votes to override. And number 3, it can return the matter to the Planning Commission for further consideration, together with a statement specifying the reason for the referral back to the Planning Commission. The consent agenda is the first part of the planning and zoning agenda. Items on the consent agenda have received a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission. Unless there is a request to set aside an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the public, the Unified Government Commission, or staff, then the Planning Commission's recommendation on the consent agenda will adopt the Unified Government Commission at one time. I will read the list of agenda items on the consent agenda, and when I have completed the list, the mayor will ask if there is any request to set aside items from the consent agenda. This is your time to stand up and request that an item be set aside if you do not agree with the Planning Commission's recommendation. If an item is set aside, the matter will be discussed and voted upon separately. All items not set aside will be approved with the Planning Commission's recommendation. We appreciate the attendance of those people here this evening, and we recognize the importance of each petition. We would remind you that there are a number of items on the agenda, and we would appreciate your efforts to make your remarks as concise as possible. We ask that anyone with a cell phone to please turn them off or switch to non-audio so you will not disturb the meeting. Once the petitioners make their presentation, anyone for or against will be allowed the maximum three minutes to state your views. As you come to the microphone, please state your name and city for the record. The mayor and commission are required to disclose contacts with proponents or opponents on any items on the planning and zoning agenda. I will ask if any members of the commission wish to disclose any contact with proponents or opponents on any items on the agenda.
I've had contact with proponents of A1, number 3154, and contact with proponents of B5, SP 2017-70.
Thank you. Commissioner Philbrook?
I've had contact with proponents of SP 2017-64.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
I have had contact with proponents of SP 2017-58.
And Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had contact with proponents of SP 2017-58.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission or anyone in attendance tonight wish to set aside any item of the planning and zoning consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I will now read the items on the consent agenda.
Way ahead of you.
That's okay. Changes on application, item number 1, 3154, Megan Painter with CHWC. Changes on with CP2, plans general business district to TND Traditional Neighborhood Design District for a modular pop-up shop at 611-607-NORTH-SIXTH STREET, recommended for approval. Special use permit application, item 1, SP 2017-57, Patricia Soto. Renewal of special use permit to keep a horse at 741-SOUTH-76ST, recommended for approval for two years. Item 2, SP 2017-58, Eric Bishop. Special use permit for a maximum of 12 goats at 3552-NORTH-47ST, recommended for denial. Item 3, SP 2017-68, Jesus Rodriguez Torres. Renewal of special use permit for a temporary use of land to keep lawn care equipment on-site at 1701-SOUTH-40TH STREET, recommended for approval for two years. Item 4, SP 2017-69, Andrew and Christopher Finn. Renewal of special use permit for a garage to store two cars at 102-SOUTH-64TH STREET, recommended for approval for two years. Item 5, SP 2017-70, Doug Clements with Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools. Special use permit for a staff parking lot at John Fisk Elementary School at 616-SOUTH-VALLI STREET, recommended for approval for two years. Item 6, SP 2017-71, Will Anderson with BHC Roads. Renewal of special use permit for temporary use of land for a trailer at 6801-INLAND-DRIVE, recommended for approval for two years. Item 7, SP 2017-73, Blake Watson with Nature's Touch. Renewal of special use permit for a temporary use of land for storage of landscaping materials at 5201 and 5204-NORTH-98TH STREET, recommended for approval for two years. Vacation application, one item, RW 2017-12, Doug Clements with USD 500. Vacation of a pedestrian right-of-way between 5205 and 5159 FARROW AVENUE, recommended for approval. Plan review application, item 1, PR 2017-32, Pastor Glenn Brady. Preliminary and final plan review for a church campus at 745 WALKER AVENUE, recommended for approval. Miscellaneous ordinances, we have two. Item 1 is an ordinance resoning property at 7331 HOLIDAY DRIVE FOR R1 SINGLE FAMILY DISTRICT TO CPO PLANT, NON-RETAIL BUSINESS DISTRICT, RECOMMENDED FOR APPROVAL. Item 2 is an ordinance vacating right-of-way at 342-SOUTH-BETHANY STREET, RECOMMENDED FOR APPROVAL. Those are all items that are on the agenda for the right-of-way.
Thank you. Does any member of the commission or anyone in attendance tonight wish to set aside any item on the planning and consent, zoning consent agenda? Reminder, if an item is not set aside, all items on the planning and zoning consent agenda will be voted on by one vote to follow the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, you're... Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Sorry. Kim Bishop, Kansas City, Kansas, 14... My mailing address, 1437-SOUTH-79ST. Item, I think it was 3, 2017-58.
Okay, and your name is?
Kim Bishop.
Kim Bishop, thank you.
That's item number 2, Mayor.
92.
Under B2.
Second.
Roll call?
Roll call, Bynum.
Aye.
Burrows.
Aye.
Townsend.
Aye.
McKeonan.
Aye.
Mugia.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Kane.
Aye.
Markley.
Aye.
Walters.
Aye.
Philbrook.
Aye.
The vote is 10 to 0. That motion carries.
Thank you. That takes us to the set aside item. And this is item 2. This is item SP 2017-58, Eric Bishop. Special use permit for a maximum of 12 goats at 3552-NORTH-47ST. The process follows in this way. I ask staff to make some opening remarks, followed by the applicant. Once the applicant has presented her application, I'll open the public hearing and hear from those in favor, followed by those in opposition. If we ask if there's a spokesperson for the group, we'll hear from them and ask those being represented to stand and be recognized. After we hear comments from both sides, the applicant will be given the opportunity to make any summative remarks. So at this time, I recognize, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In November, this case was heard by the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners sent that case back to the Planning Commission at that time because we had discovered additional information between the Planning Commission meeting and the Board of Commissioners meeting. This case was then heard again in December, and after the hearing, the Planning Commission recommended this case be denied on a unanimous vote. To... This case has already been back to the Planning Commission once, so any action tonight only requires six votes.
Good. At this time, I'd ask the applicant to please come to the microphone. Thank you. Recognize again Mrs. Kim Bishop.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. Just brief introduction, my name is Kim Bishop. You previously met with my husband, Eric Bishop, in November. He's away on duty tonight. We live here in Kansas City, Kansas, for the past 15 years, and began buying and renting property in 2013. Our goal is to repair and rent homes in the Wyandotte community that we would want to live in ourselves. This particular property at 3552-NORTH-47ST is our first one with a significant amount of land, which seemed ideal for raising animals, especially when you consider the animals that were and are already in their neighborhood. Unfortunately, at that time, we did not know, we were unaware of the requirement to obtain a permit or the limit of the number of animals. Our tenants, Russell Vaca and Natalie Elder, have been at the property for over two years. They love animals and share that love with their children. In October, Eric Bishop began the process to obtain a special use permit, and the planning staff had put in, it came, when we got it in, it had a number of 12 goats. So we were already over that property of the number that came in on the application. He held a neighborhood meeting, there were no objections noted, and he turned in the forms. He did meet with the Planning Commission on November 13th, and that meeting resulted in a recommendation for approval, and the tenants were told that they needed to reduce those number of animals that they had. Subsequent to that meeting, we understand, a complaint was called in about the animals, a number of animals, and the inspector saw too many animals and buildings. And we were given two weeks to December 6th to reduce those. So Mr. Vaca had to set out tearing down buildings, which included even a playhouse for his kids. He got those all done by the deadline of December 6th. So that was still in November. The Board of Commissions Eric met before you on November 30th, and at that time, based on the inspection, the Planning Commission changed its recommendation to disapproval. Eric did respond at that meeting that the tenants were decreasing the number of animals, and you voted for a site visit to determine the number of animals. He ran with the Planning Commission again on December 11th, and at that time, he told them that they were down to 12 goats. However, they did recommend denial. He actually visited the property, and as I mentioned before, the compliance date was December 6th, and we met that date to get those animals down. We have not heard anything further from that office as far as complying with that, getting the animals down to 12 goats. Initially, there were, like I mentioned before, there were more than 12 goats. There were more animals because they had lived there, and we did not know about this process. So they set out to decrease the number of animals. Took longer than, you know, we wanted to, but they were trying to responsibly rehome those animals, making those contacts. Some fell through, but they did get them down. I personally went myself this Monday, and I counted the number of goats. So I know that there are 12 goats there. So there was no intent to delay or deceive or ignore the requirements of the notice. We did get that done. Going forward, should you approve our request for a permit, we now have notice of this process, as do our tenants. We do have good tenants. As I mentioned before, they've been there for over two years. It's been great to have our property rented, occupied by a good family with kids, and as you can tell, they love animals. We've told them that, you know, the maximum number of goats is 12, and should, in the future, a goat become pregnant, they have to reduce an adult goat to keep that number at 12. We've discussed that. We, as property owners, will make regular inspections to imply, to ensure compliance with the permit. We will also add an addendum to the least to clarify the requirements of the permit. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully request that you approve our special use permit.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of SP 2017-58. If so, please step to the podium at this time and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Russell Vaca. I'm the renter at 3552-NORTH-47ST, Kansas City, Kansas. Is it okay to start?
Yes, please. You have three minutes.
When we decided to move into this property, the idea was to be able to have these animals. We drove around, we looked at the neighborhood, and there are no less than 15 properties in our area, I mean, immediate neighborhood, that have every manner of farm animal you can imagine, none of which are owned for agricultural, if you look online and pull the print plans for Wyandotte County. So it never even crossed our mind that we needed to get a permit to be able to have these animals. My girlfriend and her children had a farm at one time. They had animals, and they had that taken away when their father, when the husband, went to prison for doing unkind things to the children. So my goal was to try to give them back what had been taken from them. I worked very hard to build safe structures for the animals and to keep the food items for the animals in over a period of two years. And like Ms. Bishop said, in a matter of six, seven days, I dismantled everything that I had worked on every night after work, you know, no questions asked. I got it down. I paid to have it hauled away, wood that I had paid for. We gave animals away that we paid good money for. We don't bother anybody. I mean, I just ask that you please really think about it. Please don't just take this away from my family, just take it away, because we're not trying to do anything to bother anybody. We just are trying to...
You have one minute, sir.
We're just, I'm just trying to make my children and my girlfriend's dream a reality, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anyone present in opposition who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, if there are no further comments or questions from the public, I will close the public hearing. Would the petitioner like to make any closing comments?
I just wanted to reiterate that we have a good understanding of this process. Not very fond of not being in compliance with anything, so we have set out to and accomplished the requirements that we were told, getting the number of animals down. We've done that. The tenants have done that, even at their own expense, and we've set forth processes in the future that we will not have to come before this again. So appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any members of the commission have any questions or comments? Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of clarifying questions for staff. Since the commission last heard this matter, what was the date of the visit out there, and at that date, were the animals, the llamas, the other things we talked about, the donkeys, still there, or had they been removed?
I believe the inspection was the day of the Planning Commission or the Thursday or Friday before, so that first or second week of December, and the animals were, had been reduced to 12 goats by the time the Planning Commission met in December.
Okay. The thing that's hard for me to accept based on the information before is that the 12 goats themselves, according to staff, is too much for that tract of land. Is there another number that would better support, that that land could better support? Because it's 12, based on that, I would not be in support of it. And to the gentleman who spoke, I'm sorry, I don't recall your name, but Mr. Russell, okay, who spoke, "I appreciate that you may have driven around that area to see what was already there, but I can tell you from the complaints that I've had, you may have indeed been looking at people who were also in violation and may not have had permission." I don't know what you saw, but just because those animals were there doesn't mean that they were rightfully there either. I have a lot of calls from that area about complaints there. I think I mentioned last time about the rooster situation and some others. So just because you see these animals there doesn't mean they should be there by right either. So is there some number of goats that this tract of land could work with and be compatible with?
The Conservation Department indicated that they needed .15 acres per goat of pasture, but this lot is largely treed, so a lot of that land is not pasture. So even though there's two acres there, or about two acres there, I believe, there's not, that doesn't mean you could have two acres worth of goats. You probably have maybe a fifth of the site, so maybe, you know, a quarter of an acre or so that's actually pasture area there, maybe a little bit more. So that might be two or three goats. But they also have dogs, cats, and fowl there, under the other ordinances that are allowed. So they have ducks under the fowl ordinance and dogs and cats under the domestic animal ordinance there as well. So I don't know how all that relates, and I didn't, haven't asked that question specifically of the Conservation Department.
There are other animals on the premises beside the goats. I understand the llamas and the donkeys and all that are gone now, right?
Correct. Everything now is within the code except the goats.
Okay. Well, as the ask is written in and not having that other information, I could not support it as written for 12 goats based on the conservation's recommendation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
I have some questions also, and I want to make sure I'm understanding. Just to walk back through this process that we've been through now for a couple of months. The first time the application came through planning and zoning, it was approved and was on our consent agenda for approval, correct?
That is correct.
...time the planning were saw fit to approve this special use permit and send it to us for a consent vote.
That is correct. They were told that all of the other animals were gone at that time.
And all the other animals are gone now.
Now they are. They were not at that time when they were...
I believe that if I were an attorney, I might say that ignorance of the law is not a defense, but I don't think we're necessarily talking about a serious crime. I'm willing to allow for... I'm willing to allow for grace, if you will, that not all of the people who live in our community knows, know what the rules are. It is my sense that, based on Ms. Bishop's comments here tonight, that once made aware of the rules, they've tried very hard to comply. I also read the Conservation District report, and also the recommendation, the first time around through Planning and Zoning, wasn't necessarily that conservation didn't recommend it, but that they did make some recommendations about how to have the goats on the property, such that they aren't fed primarily through grazing, and also, of course, the cleanup of their waste, was what I read in the conservation. Those were stipulations that were agreed to by the applicant. I want to make sure that I have that correct, is that right?
That is correct.
I would ask that we consider a number less than 12. The property, it's two acres, and I have a good sense of what two acres looks like, but you are correct, it's not all pasture land. I would be asking for us to perhaps find a compromise, and maybe land on a lower number of goats for this property. This is a rural area.
Any other commissioners have any more questions or comments? Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, I think that's what I was getting at, but I would not be willing to endorse that without some more information from conservation. Maybe the number is two, maybe it's four. So just to pick a number out of the air, I'm not comfortable with that, is that if there is some way that we can refer this back again, or get information about what might be sustainable for the amount of land there, you know, then, other than that, I would think the number would be maybe two, but again, I just wouldn't want to pick a number out of the air.
So I'm assuming that the goats are fed, they're not dependent upon pasture?
Correct. They're fed sweet feed, corn, cracked corn, and hay, so they're...
I have a question, you know, and Rob, was there any evidence that the goats were malnourished?
No, I think the most significant issue was that the testimony before the planning commission turned out not to be correct, which placed doubt on other factors in the case.
So unless that the density of the goats on the acreage is too much to handle the waste, if they're being fed, it's not a matter of the pasture, it's a matter of whether the waste is being taken care of?
Correct.
Okay. You have a, Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. If we don't allow for some number tonight, and I don't have a problem sending it back for more information from conservation, but if we do, then that leaves this property owner yet still out of compliance with our rules and regulations. Would that be true? I'd like to let them be in compliance. I feel that they are sincerely trying to be in compliance. I'm trying to find a way to allow them to be in compliance. So that's why I'm making that suggestion, as I scroll through our agenda, looking for the report from the Conservation District.
Commissioner Bynum, this case has already been back to the planning commission, so it can't go back to the planning commission again. The Conservation District comments are on page nine, and it's really simply the last paragraph of that. And then the full report is on pages 14 and 15, but the summative comments are on page nine.
Commissioner Philbrook?
Yeah, I have a question for you, for everybody, if anybody knows. Is it possible to get more input, as Commissioner Townsend is asking for, on what is recommended for this property in the manner in which these goats are being taken care of? An accurate number of what they recommend. Is it possible, without sending it back? Can we just write that in as a recommendation, and ask for them to, you know, subject to... Yeah.
What you'd be saying is to do something that would amend the motion to say up to six goats pending approval of the Conservation District.
Yes. Yeah.
Mayor, I would be willing to amend my motion to allow for, again, these property owners to be in compliance with the law, to say up to six goats pending recommendation by the Wyandotte County Conservation District Office.
Will your second change his mind? Okay.
Mr. Moore, is, will this bring them into compliance, would this motion, if passed, bring them into compliance with the law?
I think so. We'd have to get a more definite report from the conservation officer as to whether that, whatever that number is, six or less, is, would be satisfactory, and you'd have to reduce the number to the number they recommend, if it was less than six. I assume the other stipulations that were part of the approval before, as to the feeding and the waste, would also accompany, are also part of this motion.
Okay. So does the motion include all of that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, we, Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just seeking clarification on that, so that we're not, we're not saying it's six, it's whatever number the conservation recommends, and we're seeing it's no more than six. Thank you.
Thank you. I entered, we have a motion, and a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Walters?
Philbrook?
Aye.
Vote is 10 to 0, that motion carries.
Thank you very much, thank you, folks. That concludes our Planning Consent Agenda, takes us to our Planning Non-Consent Agenda. We have one item. Item number one, Special Use Permit Application, SP 2017-64, John Corbin with KVC Hospitals Incorporated. Planning Commission voted 5 to 2 to approve the amendment to the original special use permit through May of 2019. We'll call upon Rob Richardson to make some opening remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This case comes to you, the KVC Center was approved, I believe, in the 70s for, as a youth center for youth with mental illness. At some point in the last few years, the University of Kansas Hospitals requested of KVC to be able to put adults in that facility, and apparently, during that process, no one checked the approval of the original facility from the 70s, to know that that wouldn't be allowed. Sometime over the summer, KVC requested a special use permit for temporary storage on the site, and at that time, neighbors came and said that, hey, there's adults in this facility, those weren't allowed by the original special use permit, and after research, we discovered that was the case. And so KVC applied for an amendment on a temporary basis to the original S U P, to allow up to 12 adults until May of 2019, until such time as the University of Kansas Hospital has its new mental health facility for adults open. The Planning Commission heard that case, there was significant concern from neighbors, because on at least one, and I think two or three occasions, there had been adults that had left the facility without proper supervision, and in one a case had, at least had committed a crime within the neighborhood, and broken in a house, and stolen a car, I believe was the testimony. The Planning Commission heard the testimony that night, and closed the public hearing. After the public hearing, the Planning Commission requested that staff go visit the facility, and understand what the security system was, and how it had been changed, since the folks had left without supervision, and made a motion to hold that case over. In December, they heard that, we came back and reported as staff, as to the security situation. The Planning Commission did not reopen the hearing, and voted for approval. The, I would say the neighbors were not happy that they were not allowed to speak again that evening, after I gave my report, but that comes to you this evening, recommended for approval. I did observe the security situation, I'll probably be asked about that at some point in the future, so while I have the floor, I'll go ahead and talk about that. Zach Flanders and I went and visited the facility, we toured the adult portion of the facility, and portions of the youth parts of the facility. There are double locked doors between the adults and the youth, in all cases. The only time the adults can even see a youth is if they are in the outside area, and then they can see the kids, if they were outside, in the youth homes that are up on the hill, 150 yards away or so. If there was a fire, and they had to leave that fenced area that's screened, they might come in contact with the children. The staff explained to me how the folks were able to leave the facility without supervision, and what had happened is that there had been a patient, they'd had a visitor, and as the visitor left, they just walked out with the visitor. And so since that time, they've changed their procedure, so that when a visitor comes in, the patient is taken back to the secure area before any other doors are opened for the visitors to leave, so that wouldn't happen again. With that change, and with what I observed, I don't feel like that would be a problem again. I mean, nothing is fail-safe, but they did observe what the previous situation was, how the incident occurred, and I believe have corrected it.
Thank you. At this time, I ask the petitioner to come forward to present his application. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Ryan Spire, 4300 Brenner Drive, Kansas City. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, for allowing us the opportunity to speak. Not having done this process before, do I summarize the whole project, or do you, for timeliness, review minutes, and just want me to give a quick version of that?
We'll start with a quick version.
Fair enough. I'm all for timeliness, we've done some other planning meetings that went till late in the night, so. So we are operating a 12-bed adult unit. It was a favor asked of us by the State of Kansas, coming from the highest power that be, that in the terms of the state, on the east side at least, in the metro area especially, that the Oswattomi State Hospital was struggling with some issues, and they'd asked for other providers in the area to provide some care for the adults that weren't finding beds. What we do is provide the highest level of care for persons struggling with health issues, such as mental health or behavioral health issues. They come to us when they're having feelings of self-harm, and needing a safe place to stabilize, maybe seek medication, get some therapy, then return to their families, their homes, their community, back to their jobs, so they can live their life as they had before, needing this help. To do that, we were actually, we run a large children's facility, we were just so happening to be flipping a small portion of our building for a different children's program, so it was vacant in that moment, and it is a singular unit on the very edge of our building, on a separate floor from our children, and in the farthest wing away from children. And in that moment, we said, hey, we could help out, we could assist, it's 12 beds, we have a space open, you know, anything we can do to help out, people in need, we're all for, that's what our company does. So we accepted that opportunity, to our full ownership, I did not ask our legal to review. In our world, psych is zoned to psych, anywhere we've gone and done services, children or adults are zoned the same, under the same type of zoning, so I own the ownership of not looking, and there's no excuse for that. I should have done that, and I've learned that, and I promise I will learn that in my career going forward, to never do that again. But to that extent, it was unusual for us to not have the same zoning, so we didn't realize it was a special use permit, and failed to do that. So we allowed the adult program in, had been operating it now for at least maybe two-ish years, two and a half, and we did have those couple incidents that he referenced, very early on, changed our practices, and have known since then. We work closely with Wyandotte, Inc., the local mental health center here, and they sing high praises of us, and use us frequently, so our goal is to keep serving the community of Kansas City, as well as Wyandotte County, for those persons who can't find bed capacity in Oswattomi, and need that help in that moment. They stay with us for a very short time, maybe on average, about a couple weeks, again, stabilize, and go back to their home community, which is typically in this Wyandotte area. So our goal is to maintain this program to the extent of our agreement with the University of Kansas Health System, as Mr. Richardson said, through May of 2019. At that point, we'll return our campus to Children's Services, which is our mission, our goal, and where we stand for, and that will be what we drive to and do. Like I said, there was an interim need, the state asked, and we were able to fill that, so our goal is not long-term. Those asking if we ever go into adult services, it will not be at this location, it will be a separate location. And to that end, we recently met with our neighbors, to kind of explain in some more details. We had not taken the time to do our due diligence and speak with them, so we recently met with them, and had a good conversation about that, and just reassure them, this is a short-term, acute population, and a short, acute-term contract that will end, and we'll proceed with our normal business from there. So our ask is to continue to allow us to finish this agreement with our partner, to give these beds that are needed to people in need, and then allow us to go back to services normal.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, and ask if there's anyone present who would like to speak in favor of SP 2017-64. Being none, is there anyone present in opposition who would like to speak on this item? If so, please come to the podium, state your comments. Again, please state your name and address for the record, and you have a limit of three minutes.
First things, for your patience on this matter, I'm a neighbor, 4023, my name is Pete Kovak, 4023, and we're 59th Street, Kansas City, Kansas. Where all this began, I'm a lifelong member of the area, so I was there before the foundations were laid. The bottom line is, there was a lot of mystery surrounding all of this. We heard Oswattomi, firmly insane, et cetera, then we learned adults. Needless to say, we became very concerned about that. I must say, we've had great conversations, there was an information vacuum, so when you have one of those, that vacuum sucks in all kinds of information, that may or may not be accurate, and I believe that's the case here. Specifically, I'm against adults at 4300 Brenner Drive, at the KVC facility. I have come to understand it's a temporary situation, and they're honoring a deal they made with the State of Kansas, and I have to salute that. The only component that would, I would literally beseech all of you, to have add to the staff recommendations from Mr. Richardson, Director Richardson, is just adding a single phrase, and that phrase would, KVC has become a good neighbor, and we're working very hard to make them, to improve our overall relationship. I think it started last Monday with a very healthy meeting, and during that healthy meeting, we filled that information void that we talked about. And one of the key things that was not in the staff report, was the term violent, and we found out that the adults that will be there, even on the short term, you know, now through spring of 19, are nonviolent individuals. I would love to see that term, nonviolent individuals, or history of violence...
You have one minute, sir.
Added to this. And in closing, we will work better at being good neighbors across the board. They were kind enough to provide the neighbors, even the ones that the weather kept away tonight, a letter explaining fundamentally our mutual agreements, and their commitments, and I'd like to add that to the official file, if that would be possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kovak. Is there anyone else who'd like to, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Andrew Burke, I own the property at 3948 North 59th Street. I'm a fourth generation of people that live in that area, and I would just ask that if you haven't had an opportunity to review the council packet in detail, and look at the history back to 1984, and just realize what the generational people that have grown up in that area have... in that area have dealt with, with property development in a rural residential and agricultural area that is being used as commercial and industrial with special use permits. And you'll see a long track history of development in the area that doesn't meet your land development use plan. And so just as a citizen, look at it yourself as a citizen, and what goes on in your neighborhood and what you would like to have knowledge of in your neighborhood before it proceeds through to final. And you'll find that the people that have lived for up to 40 years in this area have had to deal with reoccurring situations. KVC has kind of fallen into that because they're trying to do their job, and they don't know, now they do, but they didn't know the whole history of what people have dealt with since 1984 and prior to 1984, going back into the seventies when you had the BPU plant put in with eminent domain and the water plant with eminent domain. And these things have happened over the years. So that's why you'll see that those people in that neighborhood are going to, they're going to come and they're going to voice their opinions. And you're going to get opposition if they're not informed of what's going on. So transparency is a very big deal here. And so I would just ask that you please look throughout the entire packet and read some of the history of it, if you haven't gotten a chance. And I think you'll find it kind of enlightening as to what the citizens of that area have been dealing with. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. If there are any, no further comments, or is anybody here, I'm sorry. I will close the public hearing. Would the petitioner like to make any closing comments?
I would just second Mr. Kovak's mention of becoming good neighbors and transparency as the other gentleman. That is our goal. We will work with them. We'll actually start doing a newsletter with our neighborhood and larger neighbors in the area, as well as hoping to invite them in and actually come and be volunteer opportunities with some of the youth that we have on property. So our goal is to invite their neighborhood in and be a part of us and what we do. We hope a lot of children in need and children that have gone through some unfortunate things in their lives and are just looking for a place for stability, and same with those adults in that moment, but long-term with our children. So we'd note on record that our goal is to be good neighbors and going forward. And we've had great conversations, and I see no problem in achieving that. So we're appreciative of them and looking forward to a long relationship of serving the kids in need in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. It is now time for commissioner comments and questions. Commissioner Philbrook?
Yes, comments is, thank you for being a good neighbor and thank you for getting together with the folks so they can finally understand what's going on behind those walls. I personally had a chance to visit the facility multiple times because my Kiwanis Club works with them a lot, and that particular facility is pretty tight. I wouldn't want to be one of those people in that end of it because I know I would never be able to find my way out without somebody helping me. So my comment is, is that, and a question is for Rob, is there a problem putting an addendum to this recommendation from the planning to state that there's not going to be any dangerous, or well, not dangerous, but nonviolent, folks?
Commissioner Philbrook, if I had the opportunity, I would add a new staff comment number five incorporating the letter of January 11th, 2018 by Mr. Spear, which includes a prohibition on patients with a history of violence and would allow only nonviolent patients in the facility.
Okay. How does the petitioner feel about that?
Flanders, is that right? Using the language you have in here?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. That's what we're doing. That's correct.
All right. So I would like to move that we accept the recommendation with the stipulation that was stated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bynum?
Pretty much like what Mr. Burke was speaking about, so I do have an appreciation for that. But I would point out that our new colleague up here, Commissioner Burrows, has probably speak rather eloquently to the, what I would call, designation of funding for mental health services for folks in Kansas. And he kind of exacerbates the need, if you will, for the service that you are trying to provide. There's a reason Oswatomi can't take those folks that so desperately need that help. And it's landing right here in Wyandotte County. I appreciate the motion and the second, and I'm in full support. Thank you.
Sorry? This will require eight votes. Any additional questions or comments? Commissioner Mugia?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make a couple of comments. It's been my political history that since this is not in my district, I sort of defer to the commissioner whose district this facility would lie in. And I try to stay fairly quiet when those issues come up. But I find this particular situation interesting because a few weeks ago, there was a group in front of us who were trying to develop a facility for a similar sort of purpose. And there were a number of commissioners that expressed concern about their capacity since they had no history in dealing in a professional setting with this type of clientele. And just concerned about things like what you've talked about with some of the tenants or clients, however you would refer to them, getting out. So I just want to say out loud that I think the work you do is very admirable. There's definitely a need. The cost is incredible. I know that personally, and I know that funding has dwindled for these kinds of facilities. But I would tell you, as long as KVC has been around, I am very alarmed to hear that tenants have managed to leave a facility, especially ones with significant mental health issues that could hurt themselves. I'm no expert or psychologist on mental health issues, but I would tell you, if they would hurt themselves, I would question how they could not be a danger to other people. So like I said, I'm going to follow the lead of the in-district commissioners on this, but I have significant concerns. And I just want to keep the playing field level for everyone that comes in front of us with these kinds of requests. And I just felt like the last time we had this discussion, I in particular was concerned about the other group's capacity, and they had never had an incident and had had foster children in the past. You are a large organization. Frankly, I would expect more from an organization like yours. And I'm also very concerned about the comments that the residents have made. It sounds like they're on board now. I was a little confused. You stood up during opposition, but it sounded like there was an endorsement going on there. So that's fine if they're okay with it, because I really do think it's important when we make these kinds of decisions that the community that actually lives in Wyandotte County, that actually resides here, raises their children here, pays taxes here, that even though you're doing good work, we have to protect them as well. And frankly, they would be my first priority. So I'll just end with those comments.
Do I speak back, or am I allowed? I could, do I get, am I allowed? No. Okay. I was just going to clarify the levels of care. The place referencing is a nonlocked story yards is a locked, and we did have that incident, but in our almost 50 years, it is a rarity and something we took very seriously, and it was an infancy program, and we've learned and quickly rectified that. But I agree with what you're stating and your seriousness, albeit that is what we aim to hit every day. So thank you for your comments.
If there are no other questions or comments from commissioners, there is a motion and a second. The motion, I think, reads, a motion to approve special use permit, SP 2017-64, special use permit to revise the 1984 indefinite special use permit to allow services on a temporary basis for a maximum of 12 adult patients at 4300 Brenner Drive, with the addition of language limiting it to nonviolent patients, correct?
Yeah. Incorporating the letter with that language, yes.
Thank you. Roll call?
Roll call. Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
The vote is nine to one. That motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting. We'll now move to the regular portion of our agenda. Does any member of the commission or anyone in attendance tonight wish to set aside any item on the non-planning consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Roll call?
Roll call. Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Burrows.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
Vote is ten to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the administrator's agenda. Item number one is a memorandum of understanding with Plumbers Local Union Number Eight. Administrator Bach?
Thank you, Mayor. This item comes to you this evening. It's brought forward under the in-compliance with the direction given by the commission to negotiate this contract. We reached agreement with this group, and they have approved it and forwarded it to us for approval. I recommend approval of this agreement.
Move to approve.
Second. I'm answer questions. Seeing none, entertain, we have the motion, and we'll take roll.
Roll call. Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the planning and zoning portion of tonight's meeting. We'll now move to the regular portion of our agenda. Does any member of the commission or anyone in attendance tonight wish to set aside any item on the non-planning consent agenda? If an item is not set aside, all items on the consent agenda will be voted on by one vote.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Roll call?
Roll call. Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
McKernan?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?
Aye.
Walters?
Aye.
Philbrook?
Aye.
The vote is nine to zero. That motion carries.
Thank you. Last item for the evening, resolution setting a public hearing. Mr. Bach?
Mayor, this sets forth, as you know, last year, we started the process of working through our three-year renewal for our Neighborhood Revitalization Act. The item before you tonight just sets out a public hearing date for, I'm sorry, February 8th. Commission agenda for this item to come forward and have a public hearing and presentation.
But to be clear, that all we would be considering is whether this is a good date or not a good date to set the public hearing. Move to approve the resolution as submitted.
Second.
Roll call?
Roll call. Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Townsend?
Aye.
Mugia?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Markley?[1778.32]